When you're in your bed, and just pick up your smartphone, and check your grades. When school closes, your result is on your phone. We are renovating public schools throughout the country. He spoke about the famous wise fees, that government pay for your children. We have trained so many doctors and nurses who went away to foreign land to come back to help us, because we believe that the health sector should be helped. Operating of medical facilities, if you go around the country today, you see that most of the medical facilities that were left alone, they all not itself our people. We believe that the health sector is important, is vital for our people. And this is why in our history, in our six years, we were able to build a military hospital. The military hospital that people told you that it was not the right thing to do. Nowhere in the world you can build a temple hospital because it's low. Today, we are proud that that hospital, through all the pandemic period, has helped to save thousands of lives. We have provided ambulances to hospital. We hire additional doctors. The construction of housing units. Construction of modern markets. Plenty of street lights in major cities across the country. Our main corridors. Major feeder roads. Number one on our priority. And you can go on, I can name, etc., etc. I can go on and name what we achieved in the three years in the little space. But it's clear that appropriate agenda is affecting everyone in our country positively. Fellows Glanjiders, I have listened to our rural women, marketers, the young people. The young man inspired me by his speech that represented the youth. The reason I'm inspired, sometimes the work that we do for you, we don't look for praise. Our people appreciate you, you do more. The young man came here, he did not ask for anything. He applauded us for what we're doing and he hoped that we would do more. But I'm glad that through the ministry and with our great minister, Youth and Sport, Zoga Wasing, all of our youth program is working. Through our partners, we have renovated locations for young children to go and learn skills. And you can see the fruit of it, the young man that came up here. But I can promise you that we will do more. We will do more because it's important. You are the future of this country. We have to make sure that we protect our youth. So tomorrow, we'll not keep telling them they don't have experience. We want to prepare them for national leadership. So young man, you can rest and show I'm on your team for prosperity. I've listened to the rural women. I want to let you know that we left Nima County and we go in on the other end. I want to invest in the rural area because I believe that you need lot of things here. So we're going to do our best to fix some of the things that need a year. I've been traveling, I did not notice during the campaign because we were rushing. But on this trip, on this trip, I am convinced that Liberia need to be developed. I sat with my founder minister here in the rural area, little things, little things that can be fixed. And this is why even the huts exercise that we're trying to move and build homes for our families and friends around the villages is important. The lot of people don't realize, they know, but they don't realize that living in the huts they have a psychological effect. Because none of them have ever lived in a hut. I experienced it and this is why I left the village to go for a green up pasture in Maserado County. I cannot be president and I see that people still living in huts for 100 years. It is wrong. We will do our best. I know it's important for your role and it's important for us. I left Maserado County to go as far as purely where I'm from. It could be maybe 600 kilometer or 700 or 900, you name it. Even over 1000 kilometer, if that road, if the corridor is paved, I can go and come back to Maserado County. But because the roads are not paved, it's bad. You can spend three days. For the oldest independent country, it is wrong. We must do our best. And this is why we're working tirelessly, working hard, even in the pandemic period. We have a good conversation with our partners and you can see the activities around our villages. We are on the road, Ganta to Tapeta. I assure you are aware, citizen of Glanjida. We just spoke to our partners. We cannot achieve to Tapeta and then we don't do Tapeta to Zwedu. As we speak, we are in conversation with the World Bank to make sure that our corridor, Tapeta to Zwedu is also aligned with the project from Ganta to Tapeta so the two roads can finish at the same time. So we are working with our partners and it's on the way. It's on the way. I, Josh, Mane, Forky Claw, Jale, Bakubwe, Tapewea. Without boasting, without boasting, it's the right thing to do and our partner knows the right thing, they joining us. We must face the corridor if I will not achieve anything in this leadership that you gave me. This role, I can promise you. I listen to a speaker here, he talked about the concessional Putu mountain. But we are in discussion already because we know if the government agree with those that want to come here to work, we help our people. So conversation is ongoing. We have not finalized it, but it's on the way. My family and friends, I want you to continue to work with your children. The law makers. Your children, everything that you want, it start from them. If you are budgetary a lot, man, it start from them. If you want development, it come from them. If they say no, then no. And if they say yes, it's yes. But what I want to say to you, I enjoy the cooperation from the Glanjida Legislative Caucus. And you can attend there on our behalf. Because what we achieving today, we are collaborating. With cooperation, we succeeding. So I want you to work with them. To our rural women, I just saw my good friend here, Steven. He spoke well. It's an emotional person, I tell you are going to cry today. But it's good. The rural women, I spoke to the rural women from Nima County and going onwards, I will say the same thing. I have secured 2 million United States dollars for the rural women to have loans. To have loans to grow their businesses and grow their market. I'm trying to even propose that every year that 2 million go to the national budget so it can be for them to grow their businesses. So they have access to loan. So you can see that we're working. Just the other day, we had the agriculture fair. Our partners, we had a fair, we went there. What we saw was impressive. You can see that Liberians are willing but they need help. We went out of fair, we saw food. If they without market dance farming and they can produce such a foods, crops, vegetables and one of you, rice and cassava, then they need to be helped. our partners infuse 16 million United States dollars to help the private sector farming so we can grow what we eat and eat what we grow. To our families that in the agriculture business, I just want to encourage you. We are out there doing our best because we believe in this sector. Agriculture is the way to go. To be self-reliant is important. We have made history in the committee of nation. Liberia cannot be left behind. It's a time for all of us to work very hard. Those that in the agriculture business, the money is there, 16 million. Go to the agriculture ministry and make us proud. The rural women, you want to grow your business, we get the commerce minister and other agency. You will get this loan so you can grow your business. The small businesses, you can go and get loans to grow your business. It's important. Fellow Glanjiders, people of Zwedu, I'm going around the county, all of the places that went already, the chiefs and elders. They having they having difficulty to go around the counties to help our people to foster peace. I want to touch this important part of my conversation. Peace is the essence of life. We just came from one of the district to break ground for a new hospital. We want to thank the Jama government for investing in the health sector with us. But if you didn't maintain the peace, it will be impossible to build a hospital. So you can see when the peace is maintained, when we foster peace, development can come, people can be encouraged to come to your country to invest. If no peace, everyone will run away. And I want to thank you, the people of Glanjida. When the United Nations left us, we just came to power. Remember that my oppositions, they said to you, when George will have become president, there will be no peace. The entire war will run from Liberia. No one will love to stay here. But you stood by our side. And I said to those that was speaking, saying to you that the international community will run away. But why? They failed to tell you that I am the child of the international community. I work diligently with the international community through the United Nations and UNICEF. I have impeccable records. I UNICEF and they know me. So when anyone tells you when I become president, they will leave. I told you it's not true. Today you can see, even in the time of pandemic, you can see that the international community, the World Bank and others, they are fighting hard for Liberians to succeed for our country to be built. So I just want to tell you, the community that you repose in me, you can always count on me. You can count on me for anything. I am one of you. I will be one of you. I will never change. Politics did not bring me to before I came to politics or with you. You knew me. The people of Glanjida. I want you to know that this government, like I listened to the lady, she said, you will stay there till you get old. But I can tell you, I want to do what I can do now. So when I go for retirement, I can point hand to say, you see. So we're going to work for you. I'm going to make sure that the confidence that repose in us will not be wasted. We will do what we can do for you and for our country. I've come here from my heart. And my wife asked me to tell you thank you. The vast president asked me to say thank you for the confidence. You are special to us. And I know we are special to you. To our young people, you are the future leaders. keep the peace, foster peace with your neighbors, with your family so we all can live a peaceful life. Glanjida, Zulu whiskey. I said to you, we just program for beautiful hospital because you are keeping the peace. This democratic space that we in today, that every one has their rights. Even our people, our friends of the full estates, the journalists, they can go freely and speak. They have their rights because we give them the right. So it tells you that are making sure that each and every Liberian has their right. Now, we have to protect everyone because where your right begins, other poor right ends. Where your right ends, other poor right begun. Peace is the essence of the day. Now, I want to say something to you. I wanted to say, I said no, I have to come to Glanjida to say. You are repose confident in me. You are informing, I am your son. You see, I have a peaceful nature because I grew up with 15 kids with our grandmother. The only children that were living with our grandmother that from the same parents was my elder brother, Mr. Bakubwe William Tapet Junior. Every other child were brought from some home. But we treated each other as brothers and sister. None of the children I live with all knew that I hear myself from the same mass, same path. They talk all 15 of us but from the same parents because the way we treated them. What I want to say to you, you are very peaceful. You are good people. Do not allow anyone, do not allow anyone to take away what you have, your kindness and your respect, your dignity. Always preserve that because that will make you. And what I'm about to say, with no disrespect, during the campaign time, I wanted to speak, but I said no. Going forward, please, people of Glanjida, I know you are Manewea. But during campaign period and even when it's not campaign, we must allow every politician to come here and try to convince you. You know what you want. You know what you want to do. It's not a right, but please, let us not chase people from out of our city. The city is a well-known city. People respect you. You are the bearer of peace in the society. Let us not make people provoke us. And I'm talking to my young friends. I am the one they are insulting. I'm not saying that they should insult me. What I'm saying to you, do not be angry. We are in a country where some people don't understand. They don't understand authority. And those people, they don't even respect elders because of their orientation. But you that grew up in the village and have respect for elders, do not allow them to put you on record. Those people are tainted. They want you to be tainted. So leave them alone. Let them come and make their noise. You have your choice and there's nothing can change you. So I want you to take my advice. Going forward, we are united together. But there's no nation that they don't have semblance of those people. There are small people that like trouble. But nobody looking for them, they want attention, it will cause trouble. Don't mind those people. Don't mind them. Because your your record, you will clean their record for nothing. So let us stay peaceful. The elections came and gone. And I want to thank you. I want to thank you for peaceful and successful elections. This is what we know you can do. But to end my speech, as you heard, I've listed everything, what we want to do. And I promise you, we will do it, we achieve it together. I listen to the petition. I'm going to carry with me. But I want to do my work in the next three years so you can see me. And then when the time comes, I will respond to your petition. Fellow Glanjiders, I love you. I love you from the bottom of my heart. And I want to say to you today, this evening, I want to say, yo, yo, Zulu whiskey, yo, yo. Yo, 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 Eddy's Dewell, yo. Now, I know that you see Maserado County and it gets smaller, jealousy. But don't be jealous. Don't be jealous. We are doing our best. We are doing our best for Eddy's. to make sure that invest in our local distributor here in Glanjida County. We are working, whatever was open now, so Glanjida can be helped. It's important, as I said, to light our cities, and we'll do our best. I want to wish you a prosperous New Year and a peaceful New Year. I want to thank you for what we saw the other day. I am not surprised when I saw thousands of men and women outside there at night welcoming me. I appreciate it. You have my love. You have my heart. May God bless you all, and good to see you. Thank you.